Nope.
We are back in public session. Thank you for waiting. Sorry, we took a little longer than we had scheduled. Thank you for your patience. And we will move to our consent agenda, which has some warrants and it has some field trip approvals.
I have a question on the field trips, just in advance. Oh, do you want to say? Okay. It was just curiosity on the costing. There seem to be some discrepancies in what is the same trip, but the cost that was, so the Blanchard is going to DC in May for three nights for grade eight, and it's saying the student cost is 1,100 per student. And then Stony Brook is saying the same trip for the same dates, but that it's saying 1,150 dollars per student. So I'm just curious as to, and in fact, as well, even the Canobie Lake trip, there's a $10 difference in the two requests. So I'm just kind of curious as to why that might be.
Well, it could be, it could be part of transportation, right? So there could be a different, there could be different costs in terms of number of students and the transportation. I'd have to look at it again to see if they're using the same company to go to DC because they haven't always used the same company.
Yeah.
And that could be a difference.
Yeah.
And sometimes even the trips, there was, there were some different activities that took place. I knew one of the middle schools would go to a baseball game and the other didn't do that. So there are, there are aspects like that, even if they were using the same company, that could be a little bit different. As far as the Canobie, we can look at that. I'm assuming, do you know, McGaughy?
No, that's a, that's a good note to say.
Yeah. That would be the one that I would think might be, might be transportation, because there.
It doesn't say how many students. I knew that could be, but I, it was just more of, I'm, I'm fine with the trips, just if we could check in, in the spirit of equity in, in the district. I think that's important.
Any other questions or comments on consent agenda items?
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? That is 6-0. Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. We invite members of the community to come speak to us, either in person here in the room or on Zoom. If you're on Zoom and you'd like to make a public comment, raise your hand in Zoom and we'll pull you in as a panelist. If you're in the room, I would invite you to the table and the microphone. And I would have you state your name. I, nobody's coming up, so I don't need to explain the process. That's what I realize.
Don't rush.
I don't see any hands online as well. So maybe next time. We'll be here again in two weeks. So save your comments for then and we'll look forward to hearing from you. And with that, we'll move on to informational updates, starting with the superintendent and assistant superintendent updates.
So everyone in this room, at least, is very much aware that the fair is in town. And so traffic around here is a little different for, for the week. So that'll be, that takes place, you know, later this week and then, and next weekend. And it always is an interesting, an interesting energy that takes place right around the Abbott campus with everything that's taking place there. I wanted to congratulate the ghostwriter. We talk about the ghostwriter a lot. We really enjoy the ghostwriter, and so does the New England Scholastic Press Association. They went to their spring conference and they were, they received the All New England Award for their online publication. And a long list of student journalists were honored for individual projects. So we congratulate, we congratulate the, the advisors as well as all the students. And then the last thing was Stony Brook Theater Arts. They won a gold medal for their production of Badger for the middle school version of the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Drama Festival. They also hosted, and Ms. Watson just shared with us just how wonderful a job the students did hosting as well, too. And that's, that in itself is, is a lot of work. And I, I just think it's, it's phenomenal, the opportunities that our students have here at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and at the, at the high school level, in terms of students at the middle school level received awards for their lighting design and makeup design and, as well as acting. And, you know, that's just something that a lot of students don't have a chance to, to explore at the, at the, at the younger ages. So I just think that's a credit to the work that Ms. Watson's doing, as well as all of our theater educators and, and the people who are helping them. So congratulations to all of them.
Quickly, I had the privilege of going to see Mean Girls at Westford Academy yesterday. And it's so great to see our students performing, whether they're acting, singing, dancing, in the orchestra, lighting, the crew, in that realm. We have such talented individuals. And to be reminded of that outside of the typical school day is always, I, I think, quite an experience. And we will be seeing even more of that within that department this Thursday from five to seven at Westford Academy for the art show. So there's that. And then I just want to let the committee know that we are doing another revision of the school calendar to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day, based on the recent ballot vote. So I did tell Sandy that I don't know that it necessarily needs to come before the committee for a formal vote, and we would just make that adjustment and put in a revised version out. That's coming, if it's not already up.
Do we have updates from the committee? I mean, I'll say tomorrow night, we're going to the select board meeting, because they're reviewing, for the last time, the ARPA requests. And so we're going to speak to the, the outstanding requests from the schools. And so we, we already submitted some materials for their packets. They asked for some supplemental information to help them better understand what we're asking for. We'll talk to those, you know, we've, they've said we can have 10 or 15 minutes to, to speak to those, and we'll do, we'll do so tomorrow night. So it's not a joint meeting or anything, but folks are encouraged to.
And to note that the town DEI committee also kind of let, sent a letter of support in, for one of the requests.
Yeah, for our equity audit.
For the equity audit.
I was just gonna say, do you want to just list out the three?
Yeah, so it's, it's a district-wide equity audit. It's a pilot program to bring restorative practices to the schools. And it's funding for collaborative problem solving and some professional development for our, I think, our building leadership for collaborative problem solving. So those are the three outstanding items. And we'll, we'll see how that goes tomorrow night. Other committee updates?
Maybe just a clarification. So we haven't met since town meeting, but the Blanchard roof passed, right?
Yes.
So can someone remind me, does that, when, I guess, will that break ground or start? Is that this summer?
No, I think it's, the timeline that Jeff Goodwin had shared with us was that it would actually end up being next summer.
Next summer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
If they break ground, they're doing something wrong.
That's right.
Right.
Philophilisms.
Yes.
Not literally.
Other committee updates?
Obviously, he's talking later.
Yeah. Okay. And I would just, I've heard from most of the committee on when, dates for our summer planning retreat. So if you haven't let me know, like, looking for blackout dates, because we'd like, we usually try to spread it out over a couple of days. I already have sort of like a little calendar of, so we're down to basically six, six days that look good right now. And so we'll.
Would it be helpful to send those out?
Yeah, I'll do that.
And just say.
Well, to the remaining people I've heard from, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll do that.
To welcome our new member.
Yes, we do. Oh, my God. I feel like he's been here forever.
That's impressive.
And welcome, our newest member, Bill McDonald. Congratulations.
Happy to be here.
We're excited to have you.
Yeah. No, just thankful for the town of Westford for giving me the privilege to be in this position. And it's a critical time in schools right now. As I said, wanted to just dive right in and get, hit the ground running. And we've got a media agenda and pack it tonight. So not going to waste any time. Let's just get to work, right? So thank you again. And I'm happy to be here.
It's good to have you.
Welcome.
You're right. It's, it's one of the fullest packets I've seen in a while.
Oh, it is.
Like, 27? I'm like, congratulations to Valerie for her reelection.
Congrats, Bill.
We're glad to have you back. Okay.
There we go.
Let's go to our students. Student update, please.
Okay. So we have, we have a lot going on in general, as usual. So obviously, some of you may know, Katil happened last week. We have prom coming up really soon. And in the middle of it all is the Apple Blossom Parade. So we have a lot of big events happening for the high schoolers in general. In terms of government, too, we have a lot of stuff happening as well. So me and Mrs. Murphy are hosting all government forum on May 19th from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, where all members of government are invited, where we can have sort of the cross communication amongst four branches of government and to sort of hear what's been happening and to discuss, you know, how we want to go about creating culture next year. So that's happening again, May 19th, 2:00 to 3:00 PM. Obviously, you'll all be receiving the invites soon. And then elections are happening in general. You know, there's, elections are usually extremely busy time, lots of speeches and very small amount of time, lots of electable positions. As you guys know, in the past two years, we've had two more branches added. So sort of having a school get used to that. And mine and Varun's seats will also be up for election. So bittersweet, but yes, so elections are happening. So for parents who want their students to get involved, or know their, know their kids want to get involved, keep your eyes out. Student Council's posting a lot of information about that on social media and things like that. I did want to mention that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So Student Council is doing a lot for the teachers this week. We are really excited to show our appreciation for them. In many ways, one being food. Food is always the best way to show appreciation. So we're really excited to be, we're rolling out things. Some of you might as may have seen, we created a video, or we put together a thank you video amongst a lot of students from WA. So that was a nice way to sort of recognize them. Another government event happening that a couple of leaders, including myself and Varun and Eric Planki, were putting together with the League of Women Voters. That is a youth civic summit event. That is basically, we're just talking about how can the youth leadership get involved with the town and sort of the connection between those two. We have panelists coming, and we're just going to have some focus groups. So it'll be informal, but we're very excited to put that together. And that is happening.
May 30th at 5:30.
And then the last thing is just that.
At WA?
At WA.
Sorry, WA CAF.
WA CAF.
And my, the other event that I mentioned is happening in the Performing Arts Center. And then the last thing, just to wrap it all up, is right now seniors are doing capstones still. So lots of murals coming up in the school, lots of, you know, internships happening elsewhere. So the capstone presentations will be done, I think, in two weeks. And then the exhibition will be on the Friday, on, not, not next Friday, but the Friday after that. And so everyone, it's, it's open to the public. Everyone can come and see sort of what we've been working on for a considerable amount of time. And so that's pretty exciting.
Yeah. And along that similar line, for seniors, College Decision Day was on May 1st, or May 5th?
May 1st.
May 1st, sorry. So basically, all the seniors who are going to college were required to put down a deposit to one school to like, kind of commit and guarantee their seat there. And then also for the all upperclassmen, AP exams have been going on last week and this week. It started on the 1st, and they're going to continue to the 12th. And then after that, seniors who aren't doing capstone are done with school. So that's exciting. And then advisory number nine will be happening on Wednesday. So juniors will have a college panel where there's going to be panelists from six different local colleges with a Q and A session where juniors will be able to ask, you know, questions about the admissions process. And you'll get real experts to kind of give you really good feedback. And then sophomores also have a U-Sign survey, which is due by June 30th. There's also plenty of award ceremonies happening as we're obviously approaching the end, end of the year, with NHS and senior year awards happening. And then also, just wanted to shout out DECA. The International Conference in Orlando happened over April break. And we had two people, we had 41 people attend. We had eight people placed in the top 20 in the entire world. And then we also had two people place second place in their event, Rohita, who's here. And then we also had Deep Suren Pudi, also a senior, who also placed second in his event. So, yeah.
Thank you for that update on that.
We've not been here for like, four weeks.
Yeah.
Lots to talk about.
So I have a question. Today is the 8th. Our next meeting's the 22nd. Is it safe to say that you will be at our next meeting?
Yeah.
But not at the following meeting? Because it's post-graduation. You haven't even thought about this.
Yeah.
You don't have to be here.
You are well, I mean, you can be at every meet, right? But I'm just thinking, we would like to plan.
Oh, actually, I will not.
The meeting where we say all the.
I will not be at the next meeting, because I, I'm going to be on vacation. But I'll be at the meeting after. I can come to the meeting.
You'll come back and let us say goodbye?
You'll, you'll come as guests, because they will no longer be students.
I know.
So therefore, they cannot be.
I know.
I'm traveling, so I'm traveling during the next two meetings.
Oh, my gosh.
That worked out really well.
We'll say goodbye to you at the next meeting. You can come back and get your formal goodbye.
Yes.
Anytime you want.
Will do.
Did you tell us when elections are? Do we know when elections are?
So elections, yeah, I can look it up. Elections, we have a lot of dates that, we have a lot of dates that are currently important. Like, letter of intent is due, then we go through that, approve everybody. But everything is on the Student Council site, which if anyone wants to know, I will let you know. Give me one second. Elections. Okay. So we have a general over meeting on the 18th. So that's next week. Nomination form and letter of intent are due on the 22nd. And then speeches are due on the 30th. But the elections, like the actual elections are being held June 8th.
Okay.
So it's all sort of laid out staggered.
So our next meeting after the 22nd?
A lot of, a lot of mandatory.
It's the 5th.
For, for this student council, like, for, for this position specifically, since there's coming from student council, that won't be, that won't be elected until the beginning of next year.
And same for student.
That's true, because you want to do it. Yeah.
We were planning to just come to, I think, like, still towards the end of like, graduation. And then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So we won't meet our new reps until the fall?
Yeah.
That works.
They're still stuck with us for a little.
I'm not trying to get rid of you. You know that. Okay. Thanks again for the update. And how are we doing on time? We're doing?
Nine minutes over.
Okay. Okay. Our first item under business is the Massachusetts Seal of Bili literacy. We have Stephanie Devlin and some of our students who we'd like to invite forward.
Did it come first?
Okay.
Or did it come up next?
That works.
And do you want to see the presentation?
Oh, I'll pull it up.
While he's finding it, I'm just curious, how many of you have heard of the Massachusetts Seal of Bili literacy program? Or how much, how do you know a fair bit about it?
Yes.
No.
Okay. So many of you, no. Okay. So I'll, I'll give the more detailed version.
One more second, we'll get it up.
Okay.
And Stephanie Devlin is our six through 12 world language curriculum coordinator.
And a Spanish teacher at Westford Academy. There we go. Okay, next, please. Or right there, actually, if you go, well, you'll, you'll see both views here. So the Seal of Bili literacy, I'm talking about both the seal and the Massachusetts Seal of Bili literacy. The Seal of Bili literacy is a national movement. And it started quite a few years ago, where language educators and professional organizations decided that it was important to establish a, an award system that recognized students who had achieved a level of proficiency that would allow them to be really productive members of a global society in both English and another language, or in the case of some of our students in two other languages. And so over 40 states have adopted, in general, a, a seal of bili literacy program. The Massachusetts State Seal of Bili literacy program began in 2017. And Westford has been participating since 2019. That was our pilot year. Currently in Massachusetts, 176 communities take part. It is completely voluntary. I'm on a, an email group where almost every week, there's someone who posts, who say, this is our first year doing it. Can you help us out? And there's quite, quite a cohort of schools that are experts in it, who support and give suggestions and feedback to people, to school districts that are just beginning it now. And I've, I've certainly relied on them for certain things. Can we? So 2000, we adopted it in 2019. 2018, in the World Language Department at WA, we were having discussions about, do we adopt this? It is voluntary. Why do we want to do this? It, it did involve a fair amount of work to create the program and the, and the rules and the paperwork involved in it. And the department pretty much unanimously said, yes, if this exists, this is something that we want for our students. We want to be able to recognize their achievements. And you can see some of the reasons that we, we, we wanted to offer it. Number one is really to promote multilingual pride in our students here in Massach, in Westford, who already come to us in sixth grade or in, or in ninth grade, speaking another language, who have learned a language at home. And so it's sort of twofold. One, to support those families, to encourage those families to continue speaking and encouraging their child to speak and learn the language that they've learned at home. In addition to supporting and encouraging our students who start in sixth grade and flex to continue studying through their senior year, so that they achieve the level of proficiency that really DESI, the World Language Frameworks of Massachusetts, say that in order that, to have a full, complete world language program, our students should be graduating from our schools at an intermediate level of speaking, or for the Seal of Bili literacy, at an intermediate high level. So we wanted to encourage both our students studying languages just here at WA, or those who are studying or who have learned a language at home. Why, why do we want students who are bilingual or trilingual? Because the, the government fully recognizes that in order to be, that, that having students who are prepared to do that is essential for both our national economy and our national security. And that we need to, we need to educate our students to be able to communicate in other languages than English. And a, at that point, this wasn't a reason, but it is becoming more of a reason now. Certain colleges and, and both universities and community colleges in Massachusetts are starting to give college credit to students who achieve the Seal of Bili literacy. So not just an AP, like they would get for getting a four or five on an AP. So some of the schools currently are Bridgewater State, right over your head, Chris, sorry, Bridgewater State, Salem State, Middlesex Community College, Worcester State. And the DESI and our, the World Language Department is negotiating with other colleges in Massachusetts and hoping that that list will grow. At the moment, I think there are nine institutions in Massachusetts who will give actual credit, not just promote you to a higher, starting at a higher level, but give you credits for it. Next. So how do you earn the Seal of Bili literacy? So there are two levels. First of all, there's the Seal of Bili literacy with distinction and the Seal of Bili literacy. To achieve the Seal of Bili literacy in distinction, you need an MCAS score of at least 501. And that, when MCAS requirements go up in, is it two years from now, they're going up? The MCAS requirements for, I think it's in two years. This requirement will also be raised to keep in step with the graduation requirement. Students can also qualify with a certain level of access testing scores. So if they didn't take MCAS, or they didn't get a 501, but they have the qualifying score on access, they can use that. And then they need to score at the advanced low in all four skills that are tested for the Seal of Bili literacy. So interpretive reading and listening, presentational speaking and writing. And if you look at the cone there, this is the, has anyone seen this cone before? This is in, in the, if you go to any workshop for world languages, this is, this is usually on the first slide. This is the, the Cone of Proficiency developed by ACTFOL, which is the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Language. And it just, basically, on the right-hand side, it's showing what the different levels are of proficiency. And there's the novice level, there's the intermediate level, there's the advanced level. Superior level is something that many people never get to, and that's including novice.
Servantes.
Like, if we were to, yeah. Excuse me?
Servantes.
Yes, exactly. Yes. You, if you were writing novels and winning the Pulitzer Prize in the language that you speak, you may be at the superior level. But, but that's not really what we're looking at in, definitely not in high school and really not necessarily in, in college as well. So to achieve the Seal of Bili literacy, you need to, with distinction, you need to score in the advanced level. So that's in the orange. So at an advanced low level. To, to score, to achieve the Seal of Bili literacy, you need to be at the intermediate high level. And the way that the tests are designed, or the scores are designed, you receive a score of a number. So when, the number six represents intermediate high, the number seven represents advanced low. And in order to achieve the seal with distinction, you need to score a seven or above in, in all four skills. Same thing, excuse me, with the seal, you need a six or above in all four skills. So this is, this is the challenging. So this is, this is the challenging part, because for some of our, our students who are. Who have learned a language at home, many of them are, are surely proficient at the advanced level in speaking and interpretive listening. But then the reading and the writing can be a bit more of a challenge, because that's not something that they're, they're as exposed to in the home. Okay, so we'll go to the next one. This chart, um I just wanted to share this with you to, because it gives a pretty clear explanation of. Who or how long it would take you to get to the level that ACTFOL. Says this is, after this many years of studying a language, our expected learner outcome would be this level, so. Down at the bottom, I tried to put like level one would be our, our seventh graders, level two, eighth graders, and up until level. Six, which would be our twelfth graders, and it's only at that level twelve, that, I'm sorry, at that level six, which would be our twelfth graders. Uh where they would be scoring, expected to score consistently in the, in the intermediate high or above level. Uh so what that means is the students that we have who are qualifying for the seal are seniors, and there are seniors. Who have taken language from seventh grade on, or there are students who have been speaking a language at home. From, for, for many years. So our students who satisfy our two-year language requirement at the high school, so. Who only start in ninth and eighth, ninth and tenth grade, or perhaps just tenth and eleventh grade and satisfy those two years. May only be finishing their language career at the high school still in the novice level. They wouldn't be expected. Not that we don't hope that they get beyond that, but based on studies and. It's hard to get past the novice high level with just two years of a language. So how has our program been doing? I have a list there um, uh in the first bullet of the languages that. Students have earned the Seal of Bilinguality in, and they include Arabic, French, German, Hebrew, Hungarian, Japanese, Latin, Mandarin. Portuguese, Russian, Spanish, and Tamil. And this year, we also had students test in Telugu and Vietnamese, and they didn't quite make it in all four categories, but we were. Really excited to see that, because our goal truly is not to have students earn the Seal of Bilinguality. Just in Spanish, French, German, Latin, and Mandarin, the languages that we teach, but in languages. That, that are part of their culture and heritage. Uh so the, you can see the numbers there for this year, for twenty twenty-three, we have thirty-four students who achieved the Seal of Bilinguality. And that's uh spread out over our non, non WA taught languages for this year. Are Japanese, Hungarian, Tamil, where our three languages that were not taught at WA. And so are these students like having to self-study and learn themselves in order to? So you'll hear from one of them a little bit later, who she'll, she'll share that with you, but y- yes, um so. Last year, we had a student, the student who um, who earned the seal in Hebrew did a bit of both, but she did, a lot of her studying was studying that she had been doing. On her own, at home, with her family, um but it took a lot to be able to. Reach that level and she received it if I'm, if I remember correctly with distinction.
That's really wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. She also received it in Spanish, so she was one of our duels, so she received the seal in both Spanish and Hebrew. Okay, so how, how do we do this? What is the process? So I start recruiting seniors to take the qualifying. Language exams about October. Uh part, as part of the program. The, the school district is required to send out a letter to all family members from kindergarten through twelfth grade, which seems a little. Uh I know, when I first started doing this and I sent a letter to some of the principals of the K through two school, they said, why are we sending this out? The answer is, number one, it's a state requirement if we're participating in the program, and also that, that idea that. Parents of little children should know this is a possibility and, and it might be, give them incentive to keep. Speaking a language and encouraging their children to speak a language that they have the, the privilege of starting at home. Um so we, we have a, a registration period, students registered with me through. Jan- uh through December, and I went through their applications to see what languages were they interested in taking. And then I order those exams for them. Most of the exams that we use are come through a company called Avant. The exam is called Stamp. The four S, so it's the four skills. And Stamp is the big one, the other is Apple, which is a, a company or it's part of ACTFOL, the ACTFOL organization. And the two tests st- do the same thing, they're a little bit different. We've been using the stamp since we did the pilot, we, we started. The pilot year where we had students do both the stamp and the apple to see how they did. Which test seemed to fit better with the way that we taught at WA in stamp one, so that's why we do the stamp exam. The, there is a cost for the exam, the stamp exam, and stamp exam costs twenty-four dollars to take. And for Latin, our Latin students take a test called the Alira, which is also through ACTFOL, and that's a ten-dollar cost. And then the, the languages that are not tested, that don't have a test for, for, for different sections. Um we have to go outside and, and look for a different organization to do that, and DESI provides us with a very long list of. All the approved language testing services. Um so those, those exams do cost more, but the students. No student pays more than the twenty-four dollars that the stamp, which is the basic stamp, the basic exam costs. And then we started administering them, and this is probably the hardest part of the exam, because it's. It's a long exam, isn't it? Yeah, and it's, I, it's a credit to these guys for, for taking the whole thing. It's four parts, it's untimed. Uh I had students who maybe finished in four hours, and then there were probably students who I think I saw at least six times who came. After school to finish parts that they hadn't finished, who did it during their DLT. I stayed after school and administered it. Some other teachers in my department would come and meet with students after school to do it. Took a lot of encouraging, like, yep, you're so close, you can do it, you can do it, I can see your first three scores, you're doing great, just, you gotta finish strong. Um we did have an in-school field trip this, this year where we tried to test all of our students. Who didn't have a language, who didn't have a language class, who weren't in a Spanish or French or German or Latin. Uh or a Mandarin class, and so we, we got, we allowed them to take part of their language exams. During the day rather than have them having to take it completely after school. And so, yep, administer both during and after school, and then we wait for the results, and the results come back. Um oh, I, I could mention as well with the administering, we tried something this year that. Worked well, and it was, it came as a recommendation from that group that I mentioned of. Of teachers from around the, the Commonwealth who are administering the seal, where some, some schools are starting to use part of the exam as. Part of the senior midterm. Some actually use it, um do that as well in their third-year courses, so they test all of their third-year students as well of. Their fifth-year students, and so we had our Spanish, no, Spanish did not, our German and our French. Teacher uh tried that out and they gave part of the seal, the multiple choice part of the seal as the midterm section of the exam. Uh Spanish didn't, Spanish, nope. Um and the reason is this, that there, it's, as it is voluntary, not all of the students signed up to do it. So if there were enough students who didn't sign up to do it, it was going to be harder. To come up with a, a fair assessment of, you know, you're doing this part for your midterm and you're doing this. In the end, it worked out fine, the students who took it as part of the midterm did really well for the, for the listening and the reading, that was the section, section that they did. I'm not sure that we'll do that again next year, that'll be up to the AP teachers to decide whether they thought that worked well or not, but overall, I think. Both teachers and students were, you would say, it was, it was, it was a good. What it was, was a way of reducing some of the testing burnout, because you knew that you were getting part of the Seal of Bilinguality test out of the way. At the same time, you were getting part of your midterm exam out of the way. So as, as we get the results, um we inform students, they, I send them out an official letter, announce, announcing that they have. Um qualified for the Seal of Bilinguality, I send them the official test score with it, and then. Those students who received it will have the official steel, seal on their diploma, there's a seal of Massachusetts Seal of Bilinguality, it was that. Seal at the, that you saw on the first slide, that will be affixed to their diploma, and then on their transcript, it is also noted. That they have achieved the Seal of Bilinguality in whatever language or languages they have. They uh will be recognized at the senior breakfast, award breakfast, and are given a. A cord to wear, a white and gold cord that they'll wear at graduation as well. And, and now we're at the part where we get to hear from some of our students. And I ask them to consider things like, what does earning the Seal of Bilinguality mean to you? What is the importance of being bilingual? How hard was it to do it? Really, whatever they wanted to share, and then maybe you can ask questions that you have for them. So first, I'm gonna have. Emily and Alice and, and well.
So if you guys can introduce yourselves, say what you got your award in.
So we get to talk together?
Maybe not at the exact same.
Okay, hi, I'm Emily Foo, I got the seal in both Latin and Mandarin.
Hi, I'm Alice and I got the seal in Mandarin and Spanish.
Seal, did you get the seal with distinction or?
Yeah, uh the seal of distinction for both.
In both Mandarin and Spanish.
I got the seal with distinction for Latin, but not for Mandarin.
Congratulations.
Yikes, okay, tried my best. Do you want me to go first?
Yes, please.
Okay, um I took the exam just because I thought it was really valuable to kind of quantify where I was. With these languages, because the closest I got was taking the National Latin Exam every year, but that also. Only tests a certain portion, and the Alira test is much better at quantifying you, because there's like ten whole levels, whereas the Latin one is just like some random number out of forty, but there's. A lot of like luck and stuff involved in that, whereas this is very much more so something that's interesting. And also with Mandarin, because. So Mandarin's a language I speak at home, I never really tested myself on it, and so it was good just to be able to do that, and. The exam was also just motivation for me to maybe take Mandarin more seriously. I, like, as a first, as a child of a first-generation immigrant, my parents obviously are, like, feel more connected to their Chinese culture. And they speak Mandarin to me, but I kind of respond in English, and so this was also an opportunity just for me to get to. Learn more about not only Chinese culture, because to study, I just was like, hey, mom, I'll, I'll watch your Chinese TV show with you. I did get very intuitive, it was very fun. And so that was also really exciting, and just why isn't it important to be multilingual? I don't know, just like. Learning more about other cultures and other perspectives and ways people think, I think just makes you more open as a human in general. And it's also cool to get to learn about other cultures, even if you're like, oh, I don't know Spanish, but like, oh, my friend just went to Spain, and she can tell me all about. Her experience, and that's also really, really fun. And I also, I'm just happy I got to take the seal in both languages, because they represent two different things to me, like. Latin being like the culmination of my language education in Westford and the Mandarin being like my own culture, so, yeah. And I'm just really happy that the teachers took the time to do it, because it's, it would, like, I can't believe you were in the room for so long.
Okay, um yeah, that was great. So yeah, again, I took it in Spanish and Mandarin, and um personally, I really love languages, so kind of similar to Emily, this was an amazing way. For me to like feel an accomplishment or feel a celebration of me speaking these languages and taking them seriously. Um I've taken Spanish since uh seventh grade, or I guess flex, if you really got it, but um I think it's awesome, because so many people see, speak Spanish. It's one of the most spoken languages in um the US and the world, and I'm just so glad to be able to have the opportunity to take it. For so many years and really get to know the Spanish culture and what Spanish, um yeah, what the Spanish culture is like. And for Mandarin, um I also speak it at home as a home language, and it was actually my first language, so um. It was great to celebrate that, and I think the seal is a really good encouragement for people to keep speaking this home language if they have one. Because I know a lot of people eventually um just stop speaking it, um just kind of um start speaking English all the time, and I think it's really nice to be able to hold on. To this piece of culture, this connection with your parents or grandparents, your culture, and um it's just really nice, it just felt really good to be recognized for that. Um so that's part of why I took it, and the other part of it is um, as Senora Devlin mentioned, um I think college credit is also definitely a selling point. As I was like looking at colleges, some, some, some ones I was looking at, like University of Washington, Middlebury College, San Diego State. Um they offered credit for um the Seal of Bilinguality as um like the uh fulfilling the language requirement for them, so it could definitely save you. Time and money taking those classes, you could use that for something else, and if you study, if you want to study abroad, you can also use that as. An indication that you know this language, so yeah, I think it's a really great opportunity. Thank you.
So great. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, so. Yeah, so I got the Seal of Bilinguality without distinction uh in German, and I guess like they did a great job, you know, mentioning how it's a great like indicator of how good you are at the language and all of that. But I think for me personally, it was also that um ever since like flex, like af- after I walked into Har Ashby's like sixth-grade German classroom. I've just been like ingrained in like German, that like one hour of my day is just like, we just speak German, I think in German, like, all I do is like think about German and like. Having that for al- al- almost six years, half of my high school career, and just like being able to say like, you know, I actually did something in this language that's like nationally, or that's uh recognized in the country. And that like really shows my dedication to the language, and it also like while you're learning it, it kind of like encourages you to like. Go a little more in-depth, because a lot of the different articles or different things you have to speak about are like about various, like one of them I had was about like sports stadiums, right? So you have to understand kind of about sports in Germany and also like the words for it, right? Like, so just like kind of doing your own. Digging a little bit, like watching some YouTube videos, but also just like being present in class, kind of just encourages that, and it really like just like. Kind of gives you like some like encouragement, like, hey, I know this, um yeah. And also, I would say another thing that is really important to me personally is that for being bilingual, I personally want to go live in Germany. Um after college, and I feel like that would just like kind of give me that opportunity to like say like I do know the language, and like it just gives me my, my own confidence. If I want to go there, say, to work or just to like go as a study abroad, uh like Alice mentioned, so yeah.
Have you, have you been to Germany?
I, I actually did, yeah, so I went when I was in fifth grade, so that was before I went, and I've been, I've been like pestering my dad, like. I speak the language now, it'll be a great, it'll be so much better of a trip, but I haven't been able to convince him yet.
I was gonna ask, your aspirations in college and beyond with your languages, or are you thinking that way or not? That's fine.
I definitely want to study abroad and um maybe a Spanish-speaking country, maybe not, but it'd be convenient, you know, if I wanted to go to Spain and I could already speak Spanish. And um, you know, in future jobs, like if I, I, I would like to have a job where I can travel a lot, so you know, that could also help with that, if I just already know the language there.
Oh, my turn. Um, uh, Latin is not a language that I could speak sadly, but I don't know, I feel like. First of all, if I ever wanted to learn another romance language, Latin would be a very easy gateway into that. Um and I know the school I'm going to does have a language requirement, so I could do that too, but also, and with Mandarin. My parents secretly want me to go study abroad in China, so they're hoping that, first of all, I can like be with my relatives, because I'll feel safer about it if I'm like far with my relatives. And then I get to eat good food, but also I agree with the travel thing, my parents, and I like to travel all the time, and it's just. A better way to get to know more people and communicate with more people.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I'm gonna introduce Elena and Rohita as well.
Um my name is Rohita, I'm the one that took the Seal of Bilinguality in Dhammer. Um Dhammer is a language from the southern part of India, I know a lot of us hear about like Hindi as being one of the languages from India. Um Dhammer is not much talked about, um but as a kid. But as a kid, like I wasn't allowed to speak English at home. For my parents, it was very important that once I came into like my house, like I couldn't speak English, I had to speak Dhammer. I had to keep that up. So growing up, I spoke the language colloquially, but I never like knew how to read and write it. So in middle school, I took up like trying to learn it because I really wanted to like, I went to India and I couldn't read the street signs or I couldn't do all this stuff. So my grandma was making fun of me, so I was like, you know, I can do it. I was like, I can do it. So I took it up, so every Sunday I would go to Dhammer School in Acton. So my teachers are actually now very happy that I was able to get the Seal of Bilinguality. My parents are very happy as well. And now I can read the street signs. And so I had to like learn like 206 characters that were like very different and foreign to me, which was very challenging at first. But now like I'm exposed to like a variety of different aspects of my culture I wasn't exposed to before. Like Dhammer literature and Dhammer like stories and poetry that I never understood before. Now I can kind of understand. And like I think it even affects the way like I see American literature and other things like that. So it was a very fun experience for me to take the test and learn how to do the language in general. And the Seal of Bilinguality helped, like made me feel like a sense of accomplishment for putting this many years into like learning the language.
Okay, I'm Elena Gibbons, I earned the Seal of Bilinguality in Spanish. So coming into middle school, I had no prior like experience with a foreign language. And my first experience was really like in flex and then starting in seventh grade. And I'm actually doing my capstone right now in that same class. And it's really interesting to see like the growth from where they can barely put sentences together to now where I am, where I just went to Spain and I could hold like full conversations. And to that point, I think learning a language is kind of like learning an instrument where it's like a skill that you get to accumulate over the course of years. And so the Seal of Bilinguality test was really rewarding in the way it quantified that accomplishment. Because I could see, okay, I can, I can understand text up to this level, and I can understand like people speaking at this level. And I just missed it by distinction by one point. So, but now I know that I have to improve my speaking, and like that's been a focus for me in the future. And also by, by taking Spanish all these years, I realized that like language is my passion, and I'm gonna continue studying linguistics in college.
I feel like I'm totally underachieving.
Life.
Yeah, life, yeah. And you were decked on top of it this year. Just thinking of the amount of errors considering just how long the test seems to take, so, well done. I'm sorry, guys, I went way over 15 minutes. I just, before, before I go, I just wanted to share with you some highlights from the World Language Department this year in addition to our Seal of Bilinguality, wonderful Seal of Bilinguality winners. We had over 80 students travel to France, Germany, Italy, and Spain as part of our exchange and travel programs. And it was really nice to be traveling again and to be reunited with our exchange partners in France and Germany and Spain. Students in eighth grade, and I don't have the number, but it's a really high number of students who have competed in national language exams. Our middle school teachers administer them as do the high school students. And we're still getting the results on how they did. And on May 22nd, you guys mentioned the award ceremonies. May 22nd, we'll have the World Language Awards Night. And last year, we changed up our presentation a little bit. And in addition to giving students medals for their awards, for their national language exam awards and membership in language honor societies, we have students who volunteer and perform. So we will have, this year, we will have students reading poetry, singing songs. We have two students demonstrating dance, so it was, it's a lot more lively. Last year was a great, great evening, and hopefully this year will as well. And Mr. Welch asked me to share with you that three German students have won full, full expense-paid trips to study in Germany this summer for either three or four weeks. Junior Pravara Mukala and sophomores Maggie Burrows and Brady Burl will be studying for three to four weeks in Germany. And two WA seniors, Liv Beumert and Charlotte Ryan, will be taking a gap year in Germany and will be studying at the school that we do the exchange with in Germany before coming back and continuing to college. Thank you very much for, any, can I answer any questions?
I just think it's outstanding, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
We will forgive you and other people for attending the awards night on the 22nd rather than being at our meeting here.
And now I think they, a lot of them, most of them have AP exams that they're studying for still, so.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Almost done.
Thank you.
Equally fun, though, are handbooks.
Am I right? Room can do them too, if it's in German.
Is this right, elementary and middle?
Yeah.
Yeah, all of them.
They're all.
Sorry, I didn't see WA on there, that's why I was confused. We're gonna look at our handbooks. The, the handbooks are in the packets, and the, there are memos for each of them that highlight the changes. And we welcome Magali Ronan, our Director of Equity, Curriculum, and Instruction.
So this was a nice process this year. I don't, I took it, Kathy Mucci and I did it together. Just minor changes. When I first came here, I read through all the student handbooks, that was my summer work. And it was good to get familiar with the policies and the procedures. For elementary, with mostly grammatical, there were some broken links. And to be more inclusive, we, we agreed that we would use the word caregiver guardian, caregiver guardian would be replaced with parent caregiver. And the caregiver stayed for that inclusive, inclusiveness.
The. So you changed it to parent?
Yeah, it was.
It had been parent, and then it got changed to caregiver guardian, and we were like, well, actually, we wanted to keep it parent caregiver.
Yes. The table of contents were all updated, the page numbers should be accurate. The new law for the school discipline for suspension was updated as well. Making sure that, you know, students are given opportunities for giving their side and handing out appropriate consequences before resorting to suspension. For the middle school, similar updates, the proposed change, the translations are there. Again, the same language. The grading, they proposed a change of taking out the conduct effort. You'll see the changes there, they just kept the key for the grading. And again, the, the new law was, the 37 quarters was also put into the middle school. And then Bob Ware and I worked on getting this up and going for WA. They had some really nice additions with Bloxy. And then against, again, the law, the master law was placed there and updated. And then they added the AI information, the artificial intelligence, because that's becoming quite an issue. And that's, that's about it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Catherine? I just kind of have two, I think, notes to kind of throw out there. One very quick one was actually, as I was looking through the handbook to kind of see where some of the changes was, I came across some of the MCAS information. And I don't know why I read it, but I did. Maybe because my kids are in the middle of doing it. And I actually just thought it was an interesting thing that we clearly say what it is and who does it. But I thought it was interesting that we don't have any information in there that kind of also suggests that parents or students can choose to opt out if needed or for various reasons. And I think with a lot of debate kind of going around, you know, regarding the testing and stuff. So I don't know, is it something?
Well, so according to Desi, there is no opt-out, right? So that's why it doesn't exist there. But what we do know is that no one's forced to participate.
No one's forced, yeah.
But that is, that sometimes can be a misunderstanding, is that sometimes people think that they can opt out and there isn't actually a mechanism in order to do that. So I think that that's why that is specifically not explained.
I think maybe you don't have to take the test. I know we have to administer it.
Yeah.
But a student doesn't have to take it.
It is required, though. It is required by students. It's just we can't technically enforce the requirement. So they're refusing to take the test, but it is by no means optional for families or students.
Okay, well, I must have been given misinformation on this before.
I, I actually think there has been a lot of misinformation that people have been given. So that would not surprise me because I do think that there were, there were, there were kind of groups that were kind of saying that, oh, you can do this and you can opt out. And that's why Desi then reiterated and said, well, no, you can actually opt out. And like Dr. Clear was saying is that it is a requirement. We just know that we're not going to, we're not going to discipline anybody, we're not gonna force anybody to participate in any way. And so I think that that, it's a, it's sort of a, I think Desi needs to do maybe a better job communicating more effectively, you know?
Okay, nope.
It's similar with access too. The access testing, they have to take it if they're identified.
No, that's interesting, thank you for clarifying that.
It's a good question.
The other, the other one, it's just more on the MGL, and it's across. And I know I had sent kind of some information earlier to clarify. So the MGL language, as I was reading it, I noticed, kind of as I was reading it, I couldn't understand. It's like I feel like the spirit of what I had felt, I had read originally, kind of read different to me in this. So I kind of had to dive into it and go word by word to see what I was missing. And I noticed that we have kind of changed the legal language in our handbook different to what the language is that was passed by the legislator. And I know further down, you were saying, it kind of, there is some language that kind of says there's limited exceptions. So what I'm specifically looking at, referring to is when we talk about, it's in this kind of third line, third line there on the, it says violation under MGL section, yada yada. The principal designated will, in all cases, consider ways to reengage the student in the learning process and generally will not suspend the student. So it was the and generally inclusion that I felt kind of changed the language and spirit of it. Where when you read further down, it just says the very specific limited expectations. And so it kind of, I, and I know Dr. Chu and I had kind of reached out. You kind of said, well, it was to kind of embody what was these limited expectations, which is further down in the law. But I wonder, should we be considering sticking to the language that was passed and including these two or three sentences?
I can certainly, I did, and just for everybody's information, so yes, you asked me that question. This is the language that was given to us by our council. So we did not craft this. So this was, so our, our district attorneys, or district, our district council in reviewing our handbooks gave us this language specifically. If, if it's the will of the committee, I'd be happy to ask that question of them. However, I understand why they said and generally, and that's kind of what I was saying to you because I don't think it changes the spirit of it. I think it, it, it helps in, it, it's a little bit, as difficult as this is to read, it's a little bit easier to read than the actual full MGL. But this is, this was the example, and this was the suggestion that came to us from council.
I, I understand that. I think I kind of was thinking more along the lines of, if this is a reference for staff, students, and families, I think it would be more helpful to have a clearer understanding or picture of exactly what it states. On the off chance somebody misinterprets, if you're only reading that first bit, paragraph, you could potentially misinterpret what the spirit of the law is supposed to be about. And it was just more to kind of clarify for everybody, you know, what those kind of limited exceptions are. So I don't know if, so I, if it's just me, but we do have two lawyers.
I would say that that language completely subverts the intention of the legislation when you're saying and generally will, when the legislation says shall, which in, I understand that I'm a lawyer and other people are not lawyers. But the, when people put shall in a piece of legislation, it's a very important legal language over putting, not, Sean is nodding. And it's a very, it's a very important term. And so to specifically cut out the shall changes the intention of the statement. And so I wouldn't feel comfortable signing off on something that's that different from the legislation that was passed.
If I may, something that I learned in, in my schooling in law school too, was like never try to summarize a statute specifically when there's specific language to it, right? And I get it, like, this was recommended by council. So I think I'm in agreement there. It, it could be interpreted in a way that gave the district opportunity to basically suspend the statute in a way, which, I don't know. I, I think it exposes the district on one hand, and the other aspect of, and then you go, okay, well, great. I mean, it does say generally, and then refers to these specific circumstances, one of which is A, subsection A, alternative remedies that would be unsuitable or counterproductive. But that's not even what the language is. The language says that there has to be like a specific documented situation that shows that alternative remedies are unsuitable and counterproductive. So like, great idea to have, have legal summarize it. I just, it puts us in a weird situation where it could be interpreted in a way that could come back to haunt us down, down the road. So that's my two cents, that for something that's this important, just stick the statute in, but.
I'm glad, I'm glad you both chimed in on that because I think it's important to have that perspective. And I think that would be my concern, is that it, if an administrator reads this and follows this, there are, there are, you know, parts of the Venn diagram or whatever that this and the statute don't cover, right? That, that could put us in violation, that would be my concern. And I think it's interesting too, because it covers the, it covers the exceptions. To your point, it maybe changes the wording in a way that is a concern too. But it does cover them, so that, I, I, I think I didn't see that originally. And I thought that generally, we had talked about that, that generally sort of was because there were exceptions. But it, it does mention the exception. So I, I think, it sounds like wise words to say, don't summarize statutes. Because you might miss some.
Especially a new statute too, again, like we don't know where this is going. Exactly, November of '22. Like, there's no case law on point that we can point to, or a reg that flushes this out, a regulation and the code of regulations that flushes this out where we have guidance from an agency like Desi or something. Like, we don't have that. So I would err on the side of caution, which is just stick to the black letter law.
Would you, would we feel like we could put words around it, though, that make it more readable to the readers of the handbook?
To be honest with you, I don't think that in generally makes it more clear. Like.
No, no, I agree. I'm saying, but like, you know, the, the statute says, any principal headmaster, can we put something that says, that sort of circumvents, not circumvents, but says, our principals shall not, you know, like, you know, even if it meant removing headmaster? I mean, is that the kind of thing, oh, okay?
I think, I think the thing, I think the concern is, when, when, when Sean said it exposes us, it's like there could be a lawsuit in Superior Court if we curtail the, you know, the intention of the statute.
So maybe a preamble, put the whole statute in, but a preamble that says, you know, recent legislation, this is, you know, read the following regarding.
It says like before suspending a student, there has to be certain procedure followed. And I think you could, you know, I think one of the things that my profession doesn't do super well is, you know, we like to put things in a box. You know, I think one of the things that my profession doesn't do super well is, um, you know, we like to put, um, things in a box. And I think if you can put A, B and C, even like in a tier. Would be like more clear than having everything in the paragraph. I mean, it's, what it's saying is that different remedies that, um. You know, are available, are mediation, whatever, what have you, um, prior to suspension. But I think it's. I know that the, the intention is not there to curtail the rights of students, but I think it could give the appearance that. That language is, is an attempt to do that.
My, my suggestion would be that I take this conversation back to our council, seeing as how with all due respect to the attorneys that are here. I, I brought this to our council because that is what the appropriate thing that the, that the committee would ask me to do. This is what they, this is what they gave us verbatim. If you have reservations about it, let me share the reservations with council and then get a response for you in terms of that. I am also hearing two different things though. I'm hearing, put the actual regulation in and then I'm hearing. We want to make it readable for families to understand in a different way. And I pointed at you, Chris said the same thing. But, and so I'm like, I, there's, there is an aspect of the handbook that it's like, it's the handbook and we're actually, I would say historically, the handbook has been. This is what the law is.
No, if you're putting the law in, absolutely stick with the language. I mean, I also do want to point out for the sake of what, three or four extra sentences? In a fifty odd page document, like, you know what I mean? It, we're, it's not like we're saving going on to a whole extra page.
It's not, it, it doesn't shorten it that much.
And, and to be clear, we didn't ask the attorneys to summarize. We said, okay, this is, th- these are our handbooks. We haven't actually included the language in them that since, um, you know, in November, even though we talked about it. We all knew everything had changed and our, our handbooks do live in an online form. So. My thought about this in the future is that we make those adjustments in real time and we bring it up at the, and we don't wait for this process. But, but this was the response that we got from them. So I, I just want to be able to follow up with them. So I would say maybe we should. Off on this until the next meeting.
Okay. And, and my suggestion I think would be, because the statute has more than just that paragraph that got added. But would be to have, like I said, have some sort of a preamble, like. Clear text preamble that explains why we're adding that, you know, due to recent legislation, you know. There are changes to, you know, how suspensions and expulsions are approached. The following is the text, you know, of the, from the national laws that describe it or whatever. So put something around it. Cause I think if you just stuck the, that paragraph in, you know, and I don't think we need the other paragraphs from the legislative, I don't think. I'd have to look at it, but.
Well, and there is still, I mean, there's still thirty-seven H, there's still thirty-seven H and a half. They're very different things and those exist in the handbook already. So this is really just going under the new thirty-seven H and three quarters language, which already existed as well too. They just changed some.
Exactly.
So it is really just.
Thank you.
It's just when it's new, I think it helps to put everybody on the same page.
Cause people don't know, right? We're, this is a way of helping educate everybody.
For those who start their summer by reading.
Which is everybody, because we asked them all to sign off that they've read their handbooks.
Is that part good? I just had a question about, um. Some of the changes mentioned in, across the different grade levels. So like. I'm just wondering how holistic and like what the synergy is across the different levels. So. Whereas like middle school talks about translation, is that also in elementary in WA? Where elementary talks about caregiver, is that also in middle school in WA? Okay. And then middle school didn't specifically mention this suspension adding. All right. So it's just tough because like I assume, but when you like list out a thing, you wonder, well, if you didn't list it out, is it?
I, I think that's what's helpful about having my set of eyes on it and Kathy was a big help and.
Like a whole view.
Yeah. The principals all looked at it and gave feedback. So like as it was coming in, we were updating. And so we had the handbooks protected in a different drive. Um, so that made it a little bit more manageable.
Okay. And I love that somebody is looking sort of district wide, not just, um, here's my updates, you know, in a silo. Cause somebody's good idea can spill over into the other grade levels. Um, the only other question I had was middle school. Removing the conduct and effort grading. Is that being communicated to families in some way?
I- is it a change to the narrative feedback to not use those phrases and more of just if you need to use feedback?
That's a category that they grade, right?
It's in the proposed change to remove the four, three, two, one.
Have a number associated with it.
So it's like a category. Many years of looking at report cards.
Report card will indicate grades in each course as well as narrative feedback and conduct and effort. So really getting rid of the prescribed terms. And going to more something that is open.
Personal and.
It used to be a column, right? It was a separate column. Fifteen different categories. So those are, those are going away.
That's my understanding. I haven't seen the middle school report card. I, I've seen the standard based ones at the lower level. But I can make sure that that's clear.
Didn't we have a preview of this change? I feel like.
I know we've been, we've been moving, we've been moving away from it. For a while, back when I was a principal there, we were moving, because the question was, it was the impact, it was. The impact that it could have on other things.
Eligibility and stuff that followed, yeah.
It seemed to.
So I, I guess the, the core of my question is just, are we, are we telling families? That to expect a change or do you feel like it doesn't need a change because the information is still there? I mean, that it doesn't need communication because the information is still there. It's just in a different form, words versus number.
It's something we can certainly highlight when the new handbook is published and when we get into the new school year is to remind families that. You know, this will be a change in the report card for middle school. So that's definitely.
If there's like an orientation maybe in the fall or something that might.
We could do it at a back to school night or.
And the report card itself has some explanatory language too, right? It tells you, so, I mean. They'll understand it when they see that as well. They'll see that. It could highlight that this is, this is new this year, I suppose.
That's all.
Did I hear, oh, sorry, Valerie. Did I hear the students at Westford Academy where there was a group kind of also looking at kind of looking at the handbook and.
Yeah, that's one of our branches of government that does that.
Stuko is it or?
Guys, they renamed themselves.
Student Center.
It was less of a review.
They basically came up with the summary, like all the things. Cause like many students don't really read the handbook. So like, it kind of like, one thing that was really surprising.
It should be summer reading. It should be summer reading credit.
So it was more like a graphical summary of the parts that are relevant to a student life.
Are you talking about the diagram?
Yeah. So like the graph.
Yeah, I made that.
Yeah. They, they pushed it out and got a lot of feedback about tardies because people hadn't seen that like in black and white.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, no. I did not make that. I'm sorry.
It wasn't like a review.
Well, not a review. I knew you were kind of having a, a look, yeah, or whatever.
It was like a cheat sheet.
Exactly.
But I did think it was cool. I don't know that I knew that before that WA does have a handbook committee that looks at.
Yeah, that was part of the two branches of government we included last year.
Yeah, they have a, a really robust process at WA, as you can see by all these signatures.
They are working on also, I believe, forming a, a student bill of rights. Yeah. So a lot of collaboration that way, but.
Cool.
Yeah.
Well, the nice thing is, is basically you have, there's student eyes on the handbook through a variety of lenses. So it's nice to feel that. The inputs and the voice can kind of come through on that. So.
So as we often do, we get to this point where we've looked at the handbooks and then we have something that we want to follow up on. Are we okay waiting? These aren't going to print yet. We can come back on the twenty second.
They don't go to print at all.
I don't know if they're still putting them in the, in the agendas. They put them in the agendas in the middle schools. For a while. I'm not sure if they're still doing that.
So we're okay, we're okay bringing this back. We don't have to provisionally do anything. We're good.
Yeah, hopefully we'll be able to resolve it for the next, on the twenty second.
Appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It is time for the CPAC family survey results. We welcome Melissa Mackey. Thank you for your patience for all of our other agenda items. We're really glad to have you and appreciate, um, CPAC doing the survey again.
Thank you for having us here. I'm us, I mean myself. Lisa Stutter was going to be here this evening. She's the vice chair, but she's had a friend in the hospital. She's not able to make it this evening. But, um, if you hear me refer to we, I mean, the CPAC overall. So thank you for having us. Um, we are here tonight, sorry, myself. I'm here tonight to present our findings on our third annual survey. Parent and caregiver survey for the twenty-two, twenty-three academic school year.
I will pull it up momentarily.
And well, while he's pulling it up, you're relatively new to the role, right? So thank you.
Yes, I am the interim chair. Thank you.
You guys have elections coming up?
We do. Our nominations are open right now for all those who are interested in serving on the board. Um, we will do. Nominations are open until I think the twenty-fourth of May. And then June tenth is our final CPAC meeting where we'll have our elections.
Awesome.
If anyone's interested in running for a board or want to learn more about it, you can go to our website. There'll be our, um, positions that are open as well as a variety of other volunteer opportunities if. Maybe someone's not ready to step into that board position yet.
Thank you.
And go to the next slide please. Thank you. So, um, before we start, I'll just go over briefly about what is the CPAC. We are governed by Massachusetts state law. It assigns both an advisory and a participating. A participatory function for CPACs. Each district is required to establish a PAC. Which is means stands for parent advisory council. Membership is offered to all parents of children with disabilities as well as all interested parties. So our meetings are open to everybody. The duties shall include, but not be limited to. Advising the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. Meeting regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development and evaluation of our district special education program. And in the course of these duties, the PAC shall receive assistance from the district, um, subject to availability of staff and resources. In addition, we are obligated, the district in cooperation with the CPAC to conduct at least one workshop annually. Within the, um, district on the rights of students and their parents under state and federal special education laws. The CPAC is a self-governing body. So we did create our own bylaws and operating procedures. We have our mission, that is to work for the understanding of. Respect for and support of all children with special needs in the community. And we do that in a variety of ways. We promote a network of parents and provide the forum to share information. We advise the director of pupil services and the school committee on how these programs are impacting our families and children with special needs. We promote communication between CPAC members and organizations at the local, state and national level. And we promote communication within the community itself. And we also provide informational forums for parents, educators, students and professionals. So the third annual survey, it's our third year, um, uh, putting this survey out. I want to first thank Eileen Tatro, who laid most of that groundwork. For us in the development of this survey, as well as all of those who, um, contributed and gave their feedback throughout the process. So the purpose of the survey, one, it can be used to fulfill that CPAC regulatory responsibility, that is to participate in the planning and development. And evaluation of our district special education program. It also helps us understand the successes and challenges within our special ed program and allows for reflection on current practices. Offers guidance for improvement and helps us plan for future meaningful CPAC activities. So we conducted this survey on March tenth through March twenty-fifth. We did this via Google forms or online. We shared with families, uh, that the survey was open via our email mailing list, uh, Facebook page, as well as school and district newsletters. We did have ninety-three responses. Um, families were asked to submit one survey per student in the household with special needs. So a single family. May have submitted multiple surveys.
Ninety-three is a good amount. Ninety-three is a good amount.
All right. Some demographics. Again, we've, um, run this survey for three years. So we had a little dip in responses for the twenty-one, twenty-two. We're happy to see we recovered a little bit this year with a ninety-three respondents and that rate, um. For all of our five oh four and IEP special ed students is a seven point three percent response rate.
Thank you. That was gonna be my question.
So again, just a little more demographics. We broke this down into what grade level your child is in. Um, I see about a forty percent response for our three through five. And last year we saw thirty-four response, thirty-four percent response. Of these respondents, eighty-six percent are Westford public school students. We have six percent that are out of district, two percent of our respondents were home school. And then the six percent other is for our private schools, Neshoba Tech and charter schools. In our demographics, this is, um. The yellow line is showing our twenty-two and our twenty-three. Sorry, the yellow line is for this school year, the twenty-two and twenty-three. This just shows how many of our respondents were, um, with the IEP versus five oh four. Next slide please. And we'll move into school communication and support. So, uh, first question, communication continues to be a focus for the CPAC. So we asked our families, uh, when you think about how your child's. Special education team communicates with you about your child's progress, what statement most accurately describes how you feel? We have, if you see the key on the right side, the blue line there that the team over communicates, we had no respondents with that one. So that's good. The communication from the team is just right. We came in at about thirty percent. In comparison to last year, this is an increase. We went from twenty-one percent to thirty percent. On the top of the communication from the team is okay, but I feel like they could provide more updates. We see that as, um, sorry, thirty-seven percent. From last year, a thirty-four to thirty-seven percent this year. And then rarely, unless I ask, that did decrease from thirty-nine percent last year down to thirty percent. Next slide.
And, oh, sorry. No, I just wanted to, can I just ask a question? So I'm, I'm sorry that I can't tell. The, is that a purple slice? And that's the, the, I, there's rarely never communication even when you ask.
Even when I ask.
So in what percentage of that, just because I can't see them. I mean, I'm sure I could do the math, but.
About four percent.
Four percent. Thank you.
And that's in line with last year's three percent response. All right. So, um, eighty-two percent of our families know who their student support leader is. This is somewhat decreased from last year, which was ninety-two. Percent responded yes. Um. This could be the assistant principal and student support leader was combined last year for our K through five. It had a lot more, um. You know, publicity, we were talking about it a lot. That could be one of the reasons why we see that decrease this year.
Do you have any granularity into what grade levels those are? Like, is it new kindergarten families that aren't sure or?
Yes, um, we do break it down into grade levels. So we're seeing, um, the largest group that does not know. Or is like, no, or I think, but I'm not entirely sure is our nine through twelve.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Next slide. Eighty-three percent of our families know who their child's special education teacher is. We did also break this down by, uh, grade level. It is the nine through twelve that seems to have this difficulty. So it is something that we can turn our attention to in ensuring that that communication is getting out to those grade levels. This eighty-three percent is an increase though, from previous years of seventy-nine percent. So, um, this number, uh, we will continue to follow in subsequent surveys. Um, when you think about voicing your concerns regarding your child's progress to teachers and staff, what is your comfort level? We went on a one through five scale, five being extremely comfortable. We see most families are comfortable. Um. And so again, this is one that we continue to follow, ensuring that parents do have that level of. Comfort when they want to approach their teachers or staff regarding their child's, um, progress. Next slide. When you think about your knowledge regarding special education, how comfortable do you feel advocating for your child? We included this, um, question this year based off. We included this question this year based off of some feedback we were receiving in our parents' forum, which is also our parent support group on Facebook. Comments that are typical to, I'm not sure what to say at these meetings. I'm not sure how to advocate. The data doesn't necessarily suggest that. The CPAC always strives to create these educational opportunities for our parents so that they can feel empowered and comfortable at the meetings. You know, parents are the best advocate for our children, and they are an important voice at the IEP meetings. And we did include questions regarding equity this year in consideration of the district's strategic improvement goals. That did focus on ensuring equity. We asked two questions, equity and the curriculum. In comparison to peers of the same age, I believe that my child has equitable access to the educational curriculum and instruction at Westford Public Schools. Equity is a term that can mean very different things to different people. So, this topic continues to need discussion and collaboration so that we can open these lines of communication and dive more into this topic. The next slide is our second question on equity, which focused on the extracurricular activities. I believe that my child, in comparison to peers of the same age, has an equitable access to extracurricular activities and/or school events at Westford Public Schools. See, the majority of our parents do agree with that. Although, any strongly disagree, we wanna follow up with that. We wanna create opportunities for parents to share their feedback in that.
Melissa, can I ask a question about that? So, when the, when the question says, "Has equitable access to extracurricular activities and school events at WPS", and you did say that some of the respondents were in the other category, right? So, they might actually be, they might actually be participating in extracurricular, extracurricular activities at another school outside of Westford Public Schools? Is that possible piece to that? Or, I don't know if there's any way from the responses that you can see if there's a correlation with that or not?
Yeah, so, in the way we developed the survey, the parts of the questions that are specific to Westford Public School are only given to Westford Public School students and not to our out-of-district parents. So, they get a little, we get spliced off, and then they come back to at the end of the question.
That makes sense, because you had 77 responses and you have 93.
Yes, thank you, and I was trying to figure that part out. Thank you.
All right, and so we move on to CPAC support and interest. Right, so about half of the respondents find the CPAC to be a beneficial resource for families. We did a scale of one to five, asking, one being CPAC is not helpful at all, and five being that the CPAC is an instrumental resource for Westford families. Obviously, the CPAC, you know, strives to be a beneficial resource to the community. We are dependent on volunteers. That is always an ongoing struggle, as any volunteer organization knows. So, this data, we will continue to follow. We do want the CPAC to be seen as a meaningful resource to our community. Thank you. The question, are you aware the CPAC offers an annual workshop on special education basic rights? So, as I mentioned in the earlier slide, mass regulations require school districts, in cooperation with the CPAC, to conduct a workshop annually on the rights of students and their parents under state and federal special education laws. We work with the Federation of Children with Special Needs to host this workshop every year. It's on three different topics. One is either evaluation and eligibility, or understanding the IEP. And then the third topic is transition planning. That's for students of the age 14 to 22. So, this is offered annually. In addition to that, we collaborate with other CPACs so that our, our parents can go to all three workshops if they wanted to, thanks to, you know, the online formats that we're seeing more of. And so, it is important that this information is, continues to get out to our parents so that they are aware that these workshops are taking place and they can be empowered.
Can I ask a follow-up question about that? Are these recorded? Like, are these available?
I would, so, I don't know if they're recorded based off of, like, just individual CPACs, but the Federation has a lot of online training available on their website, so I don't think it would be hard for someone to find one out there.
And, and the other CPAC share as well? So, if you can't make the Westford CPAC, sometimes the Reading CPAC, well, it's open for people to join in and, and see.
Right, all the CPACs do usually leave their meetings open to the general public, so, yeah, you can sit in on to any CPAC's workshop if you'd like. Um, so, we did ask our parents, what speaker topics are most interested to you? Executive functioning remains at the top for two years in a row. And we see there, all, all three are actually the same, from 22 to 23. So, we're already working at reaching out to executive functioning speakers and topics to bring in line, online for next year.
Can I add something, Melissa? So, I don't know if, if you're familiar, but our community wellness, oh my god, director of community wellness, am I making that up?
Yeah.
Close enough.
Yeah.
Coordinator.
Coordinator. Coordinator, thank you. Nicole, she's based at Town Hall, and she has been bringing in speakers over the last couple of months. I don't know if it would be worth kind of checking with her and seeing if, like, she would be interested in gearing a topic towards one of these. I think she has access to funding, which I know has been a struggle for CPAC. And then I noticed that Roden Bush Parent Connection has been offering some seminars lately. And I know Ann, who sort of runs some of those, has asked for input before. So, instead of just taking these alone, right? I was looking for some community partners in that, might be helpful. And I can help, help make that connections if needed.
Yeah, the CPAC worked with Nicole Abbott Elementary. They hosted a building connections, and so they looped the CPAC in with that. And so, we did make that connection. They do share their information with us, and then we share that to our membership as well. So, we are working on that. We know there's a lot of opportunities for parents with the, for the mental health issues and support, and we are working to continue to get that information out to them.
Okay, thanks.
That's great.
So, we did have additional comment section. It was three different questions. We asked our families to have open-ended questions. I took the open-ended questions and sort of grouped them into these common themes that we saw. They are not in order of importance or anything. So, the question was, what is an area of greatest concern in your student's education? We saw dyslexia and language-based learning disability support be consistently brought up, as well as appropriate IEP accommodations and/or fake. Many parents concerned with the lack of progress that they see in their children, also concerns for transitioning from schools and into adulthood, as well as navigating peer friendships and continued, the social-emotional learning. The next question we asked families, what do you think should be a top priority for Westford Public Schools? The literacy and language support, which correlates with the concerns we saw. Adequate staffing and including support and training was a consistent comment. Social and emotional learning, including mental health. Communication and relationships between parents and the district. And then inclusion. These were some common themes that we saw mentioned multiple times. And our last question was, do you have additional comments or concerns regarding the CPAC? They'd like to see more increased communication, a variety of ways of communication, so not just Facebook, which I can totally appreciate. And then see more CPAC involvement in the community. So, these are all things that we will, as a CPAC, be working on. And so, that takes us to recommendations. Based off these survey findings, we created some recommendations for the district and the CPAC to work collaboratively, collaboratively on together to help address some of these concerns. So, our first recommendation is consider implementing office hours for families to sign up and speak privately with the Office of Pupil Services. This was an idea by our vice chair, Lisa Stutter. She has seen this implemented in other districts with great success. The purpose is to provide a time and space for families to connect with the Office of Pupil Services Department regarding their questions or concerns they have pertaining to their students or the special education process. And the goal is to address that concern we saw regarding the relationship between home and school. The CPAC itself also wants to implement office hours as well, to allow families to share their personal experiences and ask questions in a private space. We also want to increase communication to parents regarding how Westford Public School is supporting students with language-based learning disabilities. Language-based learning disabilities is a spectrum of difficulties that are related to the understanding and use of spoken and written language. So, there are a variety of ways that we support, that are used to support students, and we understand that the IEP stands for Individualized Education Plan. So, it's not always gonna look the same for every student. But we do know that there are evidence-based and data-driven methodologies that are in place, and increasing that communication to parents is gonna let them know exactly how their children are being supported. We'd also recommend that the district either consider reviewing or even appraising how they are currently implementing inclusion practices, and also determining if, are, what are teachers, how, do they have the support they need to create meaningful inclusion? We asked too that the district work collaboratively with the CPAC to help connect parents to those resources, supporting mental health. As we said, there's a lot of opportunities out there. It's about getting those resources to the people who are looking for them. And we also would ask that the district take a more active role in recruitment for the CPAC. And for recommendations, recommendations for the CPAC, wanna continue to educate our community on the importance of the CPAC and also its reliance on volunteers. The CPAC is a fantastic resource, but it can offer more with the help of its members. And so, we wanna create a culture of volunteering that helps develop future board members and makes leadership roles less demanding and daunting. Our annual recommendations for the CPAC is always going to be increased membership and CPAC volunteers. Like to coordinate with school principals to have CPAC represented at the back-to-school nights. We like to establish, establish CPAC liaisons for each school, plan for future workshops. Of course, develop and run another joint survey next year so that we can look at these year-over-year trends and then present those findings and recommendations to the school committee and the district.
Thank you so much for your volunteer work, and that was a really great presentation. I really appreciate that. In terms of your recommendations to the district about communication, it seems a little broad, so I don't, and I don't know if you have this information, but since you're a leader in the community, like, what is your sentiment about the membership's feeling about communication with staff? So, are they feeling like, when they request a meeting, that they have access to it? Do they feel like, when they make a gesture to, to have an opportunity to speak with educators, that they're receiving that opportunity? Or is that more of a challenge?
Well, we did try and address those in the questions in the beginning regarding the comfort that you have asking for communication. I think everyone's experience in special education is different and unique. And so, you'll find that some feel really comfortable, and they have a great relationship with their school and their, their support leader, and others don't. And so, what can the CPAC help to do with that? Well, we want to create better relationships. And so, we wanna create more opportunities for the parents to be heard. And what opportunities do we have now? And so, the district can look at those opportunities of what is, how can parents reach out? And of course, every parent can reach out to their own child's, you know, teacher. And we, as the CPAC, want to continue to look at, do you have that comfort level? And it does seem as though they have that comfort level. Whether or not they feel as though they're being heard is a different conversation.
I think one of the things that, that the district can support CPAC on is bridging those workshops across the community through, you know, mental health means and various area partners and regional outfits to, you know, maybe develop a calendar in places where, you know, maybe it's not on Facebook, but somewhere out in a website that parents can go to and turn to, you know, and getting more information.
Yeah, and we do try that for the CPAC. We have a website that people can, or that our families can go to. We have a running news and updates where we post not only our workshops, but local or surrounding town workshops and events that are happening that are all pertaining to special education or supporting them. And so, people can reach that through either our Facebook, Facebook, but also our website, and we have an email list. And we also reach out to the district as well, and we have it put into the district update that takes place on a weekly basis. And with our building principals, they put out a weekly update as well, and so, we always put our notices in there.
Briefly, I just wanted to point out that Melissa took quite the undertaking, took over this role partway through the year, still managed to get the survey out on time to us, which, which required a tremendous amount of effort and to analyze the survey and put everything together. Even though, as you pointed out, there were good bones there to work over, work off of from prior years. So, kudos. What, one of the, the things that I thought that Valerie brought up, which was a great idea, is not just using other town entities to publicize things, but to legit co-host, right? To, to try to expand CPAC's reach, I guess. And I, I think it's an interesting point that, at least since I've sat in on the committee meetings, it's, it would be interesting to pursue that a little more. But, yeah, I think, I think CPAC's a necessary role that it, and it, it, it provides a service to the community, and it's in good hands right now, so, thank you.
Lots of people put their work in for, it was not a one-person show, so definitely lots of people helped out. I was grateful for it, thank you.
We're really appreciative. I, I, I thought, I really liked, the presentation was great. I liked how you compared to last year's data. I thought that was really helpful for us. And just appreciate you, all the time you're putting in and being here tonight. But I also hear the call that volunteers are, you know, it's an ongoing need. So, all of our viewers, all of our dozens of viewers, you know, please check out CPAC. I know you have, the CPAC community has a number of people. I know, you know, often people rise from that into leadership, but there are so many other families who maybe have heard about it but don't know or haven't checked it out yet. And I just hope that, you know, we can continue to support in any way we can, getting the word out.
And just to note, oh, sorry, Sean.
Go ahead.
Just on the membership, you don't have to, you know, to come and attend our meetings and to be involved, you do not have to be a parent of a child with an IEP. You can be a interested member who just wants to help out, get involved. There's, you know, you know, nurses, therapists, you know, there's, there's so many different volunteers that we would love to have and bring their expertise as well. I know on the board, I think it's different, but in terms of showing up at our meetings and, and trying to, that would be awesome.
Yeah, meetings are open to, to everybody, including district leadership, whenever they'd like to attend. They're more than welcome to come. And we are always looking for opportunities to collaborate and bring people from the district into CPAC meetings. We have our curriculum coordinators through the K through five coming to our next meeting in order to talk about the new ELA curriculum that's being piloted, which is really great information for our families who have concerns about literacy. So, we're, we're happy to have that take place and to, to have that working together.
And I've known, Melissa, there's an event tomorrow, right?
So, the Turning Three.
Yes, Turning Three.
That is our workshop, yeah, we're having a workshop with the Federation. Federation of Children with Special Needs is putting on a free workshop. It's the Turning Three Essentials. It's for those kiddos who are moving out of early intervention and going into the special education process.
And, sorry, just before we wrap up, and I know we're way over, so I don't wanna open a bigger conversation, but I just think, from the committee's point of view, what the next steps would be, right? And how do we sort of keep track of these recommendations? Decide ownership or talk, like, just to not lose track of this and what that means moving forward, I think.
Right.
Whether it's an update in, at some point, or whatever. Whether it's, uh, an update, um, in, at some point or whatever, but...
So the plan that I have is to create these as action items, because they are meant to be collaborations between the CPAC to help, you know, I'm not just leaving it here in, in your lap. And so it is something that, um, by the end of the year, we'll have it, um, wrote down as actionable items and, um, plans in place of who we're going to contact and sort of ask to help drive these things forward. So I'm more than happy to touch back with you.
I didn't even mean on your plate.
Yeah.
I meant, how can we, how can we take it?
Well, I'm going to tell you how you can help us.
But yes, we will clearly take direction.
Easy for you all. So, d- expect to hear.
Okay, all right. It's not going to get in the way of your...
We look forward to that.
Thank you for your offer.
Thanks, Melissa.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And again, thanks for staying up late with us. Are we over time? Are we over budget?
Over budget.
Sorry.
We are not over budget.
Not over budget.
For the record?
Yeah, sorry, wrong word. Okay, the good news is the policy update, I suspect, will be pretty quick, because I know for a fact we've had no public comment, because I just checked airtable.
Yes, um, we have had, uh, no public comments. So we're talking about the P2102 Goals of the Superintendent and P2103 Evaluation of the Superintendent. We are looking for our vote tonight based on the updated, um, policies that myself and Gloria had worked on. Um, and yes, there has been no, like, leadership, everyone seemed to be fine with it, and there has been no public comment back on it. So if you have a problem, you should raise this two weeks ago.
No, you can still raise it tonight, we just will be mad at you. Do I have a motion to waive the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of waiving the second reading?
Of both of them?
Of both policies, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, any conversation on the policies?
So, with, with the caveat that two weeks ago, I should have actually raised this. Um, I just, and, and I'm happy, because of my, my delay, I'm happy to support these as they are. I just, two things caught my eye. One was, and I assume this went to you.
It did. So now I'm curious. Like, what did I miss?
No, 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 it's just, the honor before the first school committee meeting of September is a little bit more of an accelerated timeline.
Yeah, that's true.
So I just wanted to check that you are okay with that.
I, well, I think the concept is, again, that it's really, it's stemming from the summer retreat.
Okay.
Conversation, because, like, one of the things that, while it isn't attached to this, one of the things we've talked about is, in many ways, the superintendent goals, which are attached to the district improvement goals, should be attached to the school committee goals, which don't necessarily exist.
And the, the other thing we were thinking about, I think that came up in conversation, was, um, the teacher goals usually come in around mid-October, and we were, you know, kind of saying, it's nice that everybody gets to see something in advance before.
I'm in favor of it, I just wanted to check.
Thank you for, thank, I did see that, I did, my heart stopped just a little bit, and then I read it, and I'm like, no, actually, no, that, no, with this new timeline, this is manageable.
I mean, I would have said maybe the last meeting of September, but I'm good with the first.
Thanks for raising it.
Yep, and then the other thing that caught my eye was, and only because I am fresh off a renewal of charting the Course MASC Orientation class, and so all of this is very fresh, prepared for a couple more tidbits in the next couple of days. But, um, I, it reminded me that at some point, I forget exactly when, but superintendents can evolve to a two-year evaluation. And they're, they're, the word annual is in this in a couple places.
That is an excellent point.
And I thought you might really like a two-year evaluation. We might really like a two-year evaluation, so I just want, want to make sure we're not locking ourselves in. Maybe we remove annual.
Have you typically, I'm just curious with, in previous years, oh, longest-serving member?
We've typically done annual.
You've typically done annual.
I've never seen anything other than that, except when we...
And I don't necessarily want to commit us right now to either one, but...
Yeah, I was going to say that garners a lot more conversation if we were going to change it.
But this one is locking us into annual in this policy.
But you can always change the policy again.
Valerie goes to the right that door.
I, I think it should stay as it is. I mean, would it change much to just remove those words, though?
Which, where are we now? Let me have a look.
P2103. There's two, yeah, there's two parts, I caught the word annual.
I think, I think we'd have to, I think we'd have to explain the timeline. I don't think we could just cut out the word annual. I think we'd need to say, either leave the flexibility for an annual or semi-annual.
So like...
Or be explicit, yeah, I, I, I think...
You wouldn't be comfortable removing it, you're saying either annual or, or biannual.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I think I'd want to give guidance that either says we're going to do one or the other, or says we could do either, just so people know.
And there is also, I mean, when, when we're in policy, you know, we typically follow, like, what is MASC guidelines? What is the MGL guidelines? And then the other point is, well, also, what does Westford School Committee and Westford Public Schools also look at? And it, you know, I think the reason it probably didn't rare it said is that clearly the kind of preceding, um, practice has been to do an annual.
Right.
So, um, yeah, if, so I think it probably would require a bit more conversation, I think, if, if it's something that we want to change. If it's already been kind of established practice within the district, I don't know.
So the question is, do we have that conversation after we've already passed this version?
Or do we not vote on this again and just vote on the other one?
Lots, people can chime in. Six of one, half dozen of the other.
I feel like it's not a conversation to have at nine o'clock if we're going to change the policy.
Well, I mean, it's really just a conversation, are we going to, yeah, are we going to...
We're doing an annual, we're doing an evaluation anyway this year. It's all, you know, we're, we're anticipating it. Do we vote on this now with the caveat that, like, next year, when we're looking at everything?
I mean, this applies for this year.
It applies for this year, and we can update it next year after we've had more conversations. I don't know, Val.
Are people comfortable with that? Voting for this, and then we will revisit it?
I, my disclaimer was that I'm comfortable voting for all of it, I just wanted to raise the point. I mean, I thought adding or biannually would, would give us that flexibility and would be comfortable.
You know what? Just looking at what we have chunked out of this to begin with, this was a really chunky policy with a lot of, like, specific, specific... I can't even talk now, you're right, it's after nine o'clock. Specifics.
I'm not trying to be like this.
There might be no harm in voting on this now anyway.
Draft policy, P2103 and P2102.
Any last discussion questions?
And I have learned my lesson.
No, no, that was really important.
But it would have been better two weeks ago.
Yeah, maybe. You, but you were...
All in favor?
All in favor, you don't get to do that. That's six oh, I think.
Trying to make up for...
Okay, hmm, last, um, item under business is a new committee. The MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing Advisory Committee. Do you want to, do you want to...
Great, so, um, the town, town manager reached out to me. If you look at the charge that was in the packet, um, she's hoping to have a school committee member on this committee. She had talked to me and, and just asked me about that, as it is, um, you know, it's something that's going to impact Westford, and it could certainly impact, um, enrollment as well, too. So the idea of having a school committee member as a part of that committee, knowing what was going on in the discussions, seemed to make a lot of sense. So her hope was that she would be able to know who that school committee member might be i- by the middle of this month.
Yep.
So it might be one of those scenarios where, you know, you ask for interest and then figure it from there. But that was, are there any questions?
I'm actually just wondering, should we consider tying in the working group with the feasibility study? And I hate to kind of potentially volunteer people, but possibly having one of those liaisons also be the liaison on this. I just want, it feels to me that they can potentially tie together in kind of maybe some of the information or discussions that might happen. It doesn't have to be, just a thought.
Okay. I accept that thought.
Do we know when they're meeting?
I, I don't.
Says when is it times.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I do believe it would be, I do believe it would be daytime meetings.
Daytime meetings.
I do believe so. But I, but I didn't see that anywhere.
And I thought I saw about...
It does say in person.
I thought I saw a duration, but now...
Yeah, up until next May, March, March.
A few times a month.
Next March.
Yep.
So for, for really...
Brought forth from March, it's for, it's, it looks like...
A chunk of the year.
March twenty twenty-four.
So, so yes, what I would like to do is solicit interest. You can tell me now, but you don't have to, you can tell me offline. Keeping in mind that pretty soon, we're going to pull up our list of all the different subcommittees and liaisons that we are, um, that we have been supporting, uh, with the seven people sitting at this table. And so factor that in, um, to your, to your thoughts. In fact, maybe, maybe it's a good time to send that out, just so people can see that. We'll add this, we'll add this to the list, because this will be active for most of the next school year, and we'll send that out, so you can start thinking about that. But, but I'll want the input on this one in particular, if this one's of interest, um, you know, this week. Because you said mid-month, that would be this, that would be this, in the next week, yeah. And so I'll send that as a separate email, or I'll send that as an email after the meeting. But again, you can come talk to me or email me or say it right now, if, you know, this is of strong interest to you. Okay, thanks. We have a personnel update in the packet.
Well, in true education fashion, the list grows around this time of year, and it will continue to grow a little bit more. So the hiring season has officially begun, so there's some movement that you can see on the list. Any questions?
Time? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you all for being here.